Hey, mics. Gordy, your mic.
Oh, hi.
Thank you.
Mine is pretty bad.
Where would be the tone?
All right. All right, we are calling this meeting to order. We welcome everyone here. I appreciate you being here. Today is Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. We also welcome those who are viewing us over the YouTube channel. On behalf of myself, I want to wish all of you and everyone here Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and hope that you have a wonderful time. We will have an opening by Councilmember Carl Ward.
Thank you. Well, Christmas cheer to all of you. And I hope you really have a Christmas season filled with joy and happiness. Peter F. Uchtdorf made, I thought, a significant comment. He simply said, "Conflict is inevitable, but contention is a choice." And so I hope that as we go forward into our coming year, that we can have a year filled with some positive movement forward with good and positive attitudes toward each other and avoid some contention. I'd like to begin with a prayer then. Our Father in Heaven, as we begin this council meeting for Cache County, we express to be the great, our great gratitude for the blessings and things which we've been given in our lives. We're thankful to live in such a choice place. We're grateful to work with such wonderful people. We're grateful for the bounties of life which we've been given and for the freedom of government which we enjoy. We're grateful now, as we meet tonight, to be able to do so under favorable circumstances and pray that Thy Spirit will be with us to guide us and direct us in the things which we do, that we will emulate Thy Son in all that we do throughout our lives. We ask these blessings at this time in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carl Ward. We appreciate that. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. On item 9B, Public Hearing on An Ordnance Regarding Salary Increases for Members of the County Council. Originally, when we set that hearing, it was my understanding that it was more broad than that, to also include the salary of the county clerk and any other elected official, as we made it rather broad. So I would like to amend 9B to just be a public hearing regarding salary increases for officers and elected officials.
Okay. Let me see. And then I had another item brought to my attention, too. Janine, I'm sorry. I left my paper at home for the agenda item that you were talking about.
Is the wording on 11B?
11B.
It matches the wording on 9B.
Okay.
That amendment should change both.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we have two, we have a motion to change 9B, Public Hearing, to include all salary discussion for all elected officials, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then on 11B should match the same wording as 9B?
Or 9B should match 11B.
Yeah, or 9B should match 11B. All right, do I have a second on that?
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we make those changes on the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from December 1st and December 6th?
I will move to approve the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of December 1st, 2022, and December 6th of 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. All right, we are down to a report from our county executive, David Zook. Executive, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a moment during this report time to thank our outgoing councilmembers for their many years of service. It's a unique experience to run for office and serve as an elected official. And it takes, it takes a certain level of mental grit and mental strength and courage to step up and to do that. So I just would like to thank all of you for your many years of service and for the contributions you've made to Cache County. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Zook. All right, items of special interest. Is Mr. Abercrombie here yet? Doesn't look like it. He probably will be a little bit late, understanding he's coming up from Salt Lake there. All right, we have a consolidation of public defender's office update from Mr. Mike McGuinness. Thank you, Mike, for being here.
Thank you for your time. So we, some of the councilmembers I met with, we met with Box Elder, finalized an agreement. There's some dispute on how that agreement should be conducted, but I think we've come to a resolution. I've sent a finalized copy to a few of you, and nothing's really changed from my presentation. The final amount that is going to be paid out from Box Elder, I think it's $97,000, to Cache County for the consolidation. But that's pretty much the only thing that's changed since the last time I presented to the council.
Mike, could you kind of explain a little bit what this is all about, so the public is more aware of it?
Sure. So, right now, we have, in our county, we actually have a full-time managing defender, which is me, official public defender's office that we're making. Whereas in Box Elder, they do not. Everything's run through a contract situation. And in allowing, in our state, they're pushing for more formalized organization of the public defender's offices. So what we're doing is we're having a partnership with Box Elder to have our office manage the Box Elder public defender's office. So what I will be doing is helping them with contracts, getting grants, you know, caseloads, things such as that. And in exchange for that, they're paying for part of our services to do that. We have an air- local agreement that was drafted by their office that we've looked at and things such as that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mike. Any questions from the council?
I just sent you guys that. I received it earlier today, so I can just email it to you.
Awesome.
Interlocal agreement.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next item we have down is the discussion of the county clerk slash auditor moving to part-time. And Jess, you have, would like to present something to us. Thank you for being here.
A week ago, there was a discussion and a presentation about this item. I just want to very briefly discuss some of those points, and then I'm going to move on. So there's a quote that I love, as ever since I've been elected to this office and appointed. "It's not the critic who counts; it's not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes up short again and again because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who at the worst if he fails, at least he fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be among those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." And that's Teddy Roosevelt. So, two years ago and this past year, I ran for office on a platform of efficiency and improved processes. It was my privilege to oversee federal and elections and work with the cities to manage the municipal elections. We constructed a new ballot center, which required eight months of work. We worked, we moved all the clerk processes online. We implemented robust internal audits. We began to marry citizens again in the office. We digitized tens of thousands of documents. We completed a professional archival system that meets the standards of the Utah State Archives. We continued to update our election equipment. We created a dedicated tax office and assisted in updating Utah law so that ballot envelopes are tracked and voters are notified at all stages of the process. My staff, over the past two years, has performed decades of work during that time. But I want to recognize the amazing things that my staff members are accomplishing even after they leave the office. One is currently working for a major financial firm. One took a major promotion in elections. One is now working as a public relations specialist. One will leave in the coming year for law school, I'm hoping it's elections law, and another left and then returned because they liked the office. I'm grateful for the work that they all put into this county, and we're all better because of them. So it was stated last meeting that the clerk's budget has increased 135% since I took office and that the election budget is unprecedented. I just want to point out, we didn't increase the budget. We rearranged the budget between the clerk and the elections. The clerk personnel was moved from elections to clerk. That's why you saw an increase. If you actually look from 2018 to present, you can see that we've actually begun to decrease the budget over time. So I've been very cautious and cost-sensitive to make sure that our budget was decreasing over time. And 2020, we were within $6,000. In 2022, although I have to say, I'm grateful for all that the council has done, I just want you guys to know, I'm grateful for every, every dollar there made a difference to the voters. Every dollar made an impact to someone in this county. And I just want to, I just wanted to point that out. So, next slide, please. The county's growing, and just like our family budgets, when you have more members, your budget naturally increases. Our county is growing, and there's a level of quality that people expect. We expect our garbage to be picked up. We expect our lights to come on at the flick of a switch. We expect secure and transparent elections. When I proposed my part-time status, I wanted to give the county the resources it deserves without raising the budget. It's fiscally responsible to do so. And if an elected official wants to give back their funding, it is allowed by state code. But I just wanted to point out, sometimes budgets go up when the needs arise. It doesn't mean something bad is happening. It just means that sometimes there's a need, the budget went up, and then we can reevaluate. Are there associated costs with going part-time? There's a savings of more than $100,000 a year. What could be accomplished? Oh, I put the same thing. I apologize. More audits. We know that the county has been short on audits for decades. And even though we've performed six audits in the past two years, one of the findings of which, we found that the Senior Citizen Center has been without a board that's mandated by code for more than 30 years. And so we are, we're trying to help get to that point. We never wanted to punitively or punish people with our audits. We always went in and said, "What can we do to just help? We just want to help everybody." And so we've done six audits, but how much more could be done if we put some of that funding towards it? How would we know if it would work? So the role would continue to be evaluated, just like other innovations. We moved all of the, we moved marriage online so that people could request things online. We moved business licensing, dramas online. Just like those innovations, we would continue to reevaluate and see if it didn't work. And then it would be up to the council to make that determination if it wasn't working, if there were, if there were issues. And I would work very closely with the council to make that determination. I would never rely upon, I think, when you enter into something like this, you need to discuss it with others. How do we know if it will work, excuse me, is it possible to run a department and work part-time? Reallocating the salary of the clerk auditor would allow more work and office resources without increasing the overall budget. You have, you have a certain amount of money in each budget that's allocated, because my salary comes out of three budgets. You could do 10 more audits in a year. You could hire two additional, you could hire two additional part-time staff. And you could increase the clerks, or not increase the clerks, excuse me, and you could allocate that funding towards digitizing the records in the clerk's office. Now, some have said, "Why not just use ARPA?" Well, I mean, I'll be honest, my ARPA request was the one that got denied last year, so I'm a little shy on that. But I, I don't like ARPA. Neither do you, as a council. And the less that we can use of ARPA, I think, the better. What are the benefits? Fiscal responsibility. The office is running. My staff has actually joined me today in this office. We held a meeting and I, I asked them, I said, "You tell me what you want. Staff, you're the ones that have to, have to be here on the day in, day out. I'm reallocating this, and I'm, I'm just going to do what you say." And in their words, they said, "Why not keep going? Why not give it a try? Why not see if it works?" But reallocating the budget towards election equipment, audits, election workers, and then unused funding could be returned to the general fund. We returned $50,000 to the general fund last year from my, from my office. Obviously, the difficulty with elections is that towards the end of the year, you, when you finally know all of your expenses that come in from the election, because they're variable, that, well, it's too late to spend that money sometimes. So you have to, you have to give that back to the general fund, which I appreciate. But those are the benefits. That's the proposal. And I think, I just want to remind the council, it would just be for a trial run. So with that, I'll open to questions.
Thank you, Jess. I think you're thinking clearly, I think. It makes sense to me.
Jess, this makes absolutely no sense to me. And I have a couple of questions that people have asked me that I feel are fair to ask you, because they've been asked by my constituents in phone calls.
I just want to make sure that we don't bring outside work into it, that we stick to just the part-time aspect of the conversation.
This has to do with that whole conversation about, about part-time. And they're confused, because they're wondering, first of all, why you had your wife filed to run against you as a write-in, okay? And then the next thing we know, as soon as the election's over, it's like, "I'm going to go to part-time." So you have to understand, from their perspective, that looks a little odd. And they're wondering, "Why didn't you just say, 'I want to go to part-time,' so voters could know?" And then somebody who wanted to serve full-time could have filed as a write-in. Can you help me understand? Do you see how confusing that is to people?
Well, I mean, they could just ask me, but let me just tell you, have you heard of Martha Hughes Cannon? She's got nothing on my wife. I would, I would say, never tell your wife that she doesn't know what it's like to run for office and the stresses that that brings, because she's likely to file. Now, unfortunately, she filed and she didn't get the refund, because she didn't realize that after the end of the filing date, you couldn't be refunded. But, but...
So did you not want to serve anymore? And then why did she, why did she withdraw the candidate? People are asking me these questions, and I think it's fair to answer them?
I just answered that question. My wife did it as a joke. My wife, it was a joke. I can, I was not intending to leave the office at that time. There was no intention.
A $500 joke.
Well, like I said, she made the mistake, because she didn't understand that if you filed, you couldn't be refunded on that. So, yes. But I, yes. So, yeah, it was, it was, we laugh about it now, so.
So, to this end as well, Jess, if this is such a great idea, then it should be a county-wide policy, right? That all our department heads only work seven hours a week, and all our other elected officials only come in seven hours a week and leave a to-do list for their employees, and that's efficient? Is that what you're saying? Because if you're saying it works for your office, then it ought to work pretty much for the other offices.
Well, no. I think that's like equating the council and saying, "Because you're part-time, therefore we should all be part-time." I think what I'm saying is, over the past two years, we've been able to get the office to a point where we have all the tasks delegated. I'm just saying, let's try it out. I'm not saying that this is the perfect solution. I'm not saying that this is going to be the end-all. I'm just saying, let's give it a try, and if it doesn't work, then the responsibility's on the office holder. The responsibility's not on anybody else to bear that. It's, it's me saying, let's give something a chance. If it works, how, how cool will that be? It would save a tremendous amount of money for the county, give, prepare the county for 2024 with all the resources necessary, be able to do far more audits than if I'm, if I'm there, because that frees up the funding, because we've outsourced our audits. That's what we've always done. And I just have another thing, is I'd like to turn over the auditor to the audit committee next year. I'd like to say, "Here's the auditor," and I'd like the audit committee next year to direct the audits, so that those things are something with both branches working in tandem to get things accomplished. So, but that's, that's, any other questions by the council?
I still have a couple that people have asked me.
Sure.
And they want to know, "How can you truly manage if you're not there? How can you truly manage your office if you're not there to oversee the day-to-day operations of your office?"
Well, I guess I'd answer with this. For the past eight months, I've been building a new facility for the elections. If people think that I'm just sitting in my office waiting for questions, they're mistaken. For eight months, I've been at the election center, preparing, building, constructing personally, making sure that things were ready for the election. And so, and we still got through. I think it's important to note that nothing, we have had zero complaints about the election over this last year. And that was with me, working full-time, essentially building that new building and overseeing the construction and that facility. So I, I think there's a perception that maybe they, people think, "Oh, the clerk is just sitting in his office waiting for questions." But really, I would email the people back then, and I would call them back, and I would, just like I would do now. And I, I email still in a timely manner, and I, you know, every break, I'm emailing, calling, and, and getting things done. You guys can attest to that, that I've been very timely in my responses. But again, I don't want to say, "This is an end-all-be-all." This is, this is Jess Bradfield saying, it's, it's a, it is a attempt at something new, attempt at something innovative. And if it, if it doesn't seem like it's working, what I'd like to do is, in three months, set a three-month date. And in three months, we have a deep evaluation by the, by the county council chair. The county council has investigative, investigatory powers. They can delegate that to the county chair, and they can do a deep dive into the office. And we can look at that together and say, "Is this something that's working? If not, you know, I don't see a problem with that, because there would be $30,000 essentially at the end of that, that could be reallocated that wasn't used by me not taking a salary." So that $30,000 could still be allocated towards the office, but...
You done? I have two questions. Talked about, you know, and thank you for your presentation, thank you for what you've done. I mean, we all understand that, that the elections are important. You presented about hiring more staff. I don't want to do that with a budget that has to go to a new clerk auditor sometime, and then we have some staff that's hired that we haven't budgeted in for the right, proper area. So I'm concerned about that. I understand your presentation, but I'm sitting here from a council member saying, "I don't want to open the door that says, 'I allow this with the clerk auditor,' and I need to look at the other thing." I'm sitting with constituents that say, "We elected, we need somebody in the office." And that's where my feelings are, is that we have a full-time elected official. You've presented some good points. However, I still sit back and say, "I don't want a new staff based on your salary not being used for you at this time, because eventually it will go to a clerk auditor." And I'm very hesitant to go down a path that's not been charted before, because then that opens the door for other elected officials, which I don't want to have to sit and answer down the road. So those are my points.
Yeah. The point is, though, the law allows this. And so what we have to do as a council is, if we don't want to see this happen in other, in other offices, we need to change our ordinance. And we, because right now, it's allowed. It's not, frankly, we, I don't think we can give our permission. It just simply is, it's allowed, and our concern needs to be on the, on the budget side of it and, and to make sure that sufficient resources are there to make sure that the office is running efficiently and, and the things are getting done that need to get done. Marriage licenses are being, being issued, and that marriages are taking place as they are now, and, and that we are preparing for the next election cycle, and that things are moving the right way. And Jess has said, 90-day trial period. If it doesn't work, then we'll figure something else out.
I think that's great, Carl. I agree with you. So let's talk about it, because government's hard. We write down laws, and we're held to very high standards. So you can say anything you want to say.
Well, I don't write the laws.
Well, I know. So we're going to talk about the laws. And we're going to figure out how this actually is going to work.
Mm-hmm.
So how do we, how does your salary get allocated? How does your salary get set?
My salary is allocated one-third to each budget. I have three...
That's true. It's allocated 34% to the clerk, and 33% to the auditor, and 33% to the elections. But how does your salary get set in the budget?
So as it, as it's set, currently, it's towards personnel. However, that can be relocated by the next council, should they determine. They can say, if they determine that it's working, I'm not saying, "Let's hurry and make a reallocation." If it's determined that it is viable, and if it is determined that this is the option, or if it's viable, that's really the question, is, then they would go in and they would do a budget amendment and move that. I wouldn't move it myself.
It's not a budget amendment, because we've got something on the agenda today, 11B. It's actually an ordinance that we set. So we're going to set that ordinance, and then by law, we pay you that amount of money. And so what I would like to know is, the auditor and the clerk, the person that's in charge keeping records and then auditing those, how are we going to set that amount of money? Because you've thrown a lot of numbers around.
Yeah.
You've got a salary of $105,806, approximate benefits $39,800, which gives us an annual amount that we can play with of $145,600. How many hours a week are you going to work? Because then we're going to need to set that ordinance to that number of hours. You've said six, you've said eight, you've said 16, you've said part-time to 20. said six, you've said eight, you've said 16, you said part-time to 20. We need to figure that out in order to set that ordinance, and then that money gets fixed in stone, so to speak, and paid to you. And then you've also said, you're going to give up six months of salary. Is that right?
Let's, let's make this easier. Let's just make.
That's what I'm trying to make it easy, because you can't just willy-nilly, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. It's a serious business government.
So, I, I, Paul.
How do we do it?
Paul, you and I both know.
I just am asking.
I appreciate you, by the way. I, I, you know, I often think that if I was on the bench, because I've been on the bench before, when I was in Logan City Council, man, Paul reminds me a lot of myself sometimes, and it's refreshing. It's also scary as hell to go in front of Paul Bort, because it reminds me of going in front of myself potentially, but, sorry for swearing as well. But I, I, but I, I, let's just make it easy. You know, I've said, I'll go without, you're saying, you can't be not paid.
Right.
Right? I'm saying, and you're saying, we, we need to set that. You already know that my salary is X. Just cut it in half. Just cut it in half, and that way, it's the equivalent of not being paid for six months of the year. Or.
If I, if I can speak up, so the county code already sets forth, it would be paid at an hourly rate of whatever the council sets his overall salary. So, so we, cutting it in half, that doesn't really do a lot, except changes the hourly rate that you'd be paid, because you'd have to, under county code, under 2.28.030 subsection B, it's going to be an hourly rate. You'd have to keep track of your hours. So, if the council left his salary as it was, it would be an hourly rate based on what his set salary is. So, just to clarify, cutting, cutting it in half, I guess it would have an impact on that, but it's not going to be six months without pay. We can't, I think we're going to run into problems legally if we have someone clocking hours and not being paid.
Thank you, Dane. And that's what I'm talking about.
I got you.
And that's why we're saying, you can't just wake up one morning and go, I'm going to change it. We need to have some discussions. We need to talk about what the effects are, what the knock-on effects are, and things like that.
Dane, could I just ask you a question?
I want to ask you some questions about your presentation.
Well, I, I'd like to talk about the pay first. Dane, would it be possible for me not to enter the hours officially, but still track them, so that if there was ever a question, that it would be? I guess that's the biggest thing. I just want to make sure.
Well, no. If, if you're doing the work, and this gets into HR, but my understanding of the Fair Labor Standards Act, that if you're doing the work and track, I mean, you can't not get paid for that time. That's, we're going to, that could get the county in trouble with the law.
The FLSA.
And then, as far as other elected officials, when they're, they have the, the wealth to donate their salary back to the entity paying them, they have to have, that could cause tax problems for you. It could cause issues with our finance office.
So, I, I'll make it easy. Pay me minimum wage.
That doesn't solve this problem.
You could say, as long as you're part-time, minimum wage, $7 an hour.
Okay, so.
Or, or you could set the salary at $1. For me, I just want the council to know, it is not about the money. For me, it is about ensuring the office succeeds. It's about seeing this through to the end. I'm not, I don't, it's not about the money. I don't want anybody to think that, hey, this is about Jess wanting more money. Give it a dollar salary. We'll make it work.
So, let's skip the salary for a minute, because that is a huge issue, but let's just go with, let's make it work. You decided to go part-time, your office is efficient. You want to do, what are your metrics of success? How do you measure your employees, and what do you call this being a success in three months?
Yeah, so everything would be, we would work, I would work with the county council chair to determine those metrics, and that would be worked with through the council. And my assumption is, the next chair, whether it's Barbara or whoever, would work with me to set those metrics, and would, would check on my office, and use your investiga, investigative, investigatory powers to say, are these metrics being met? I, I think, obviously, the law gives you the metrics. If you really want to look at, are you meeting the objectives of your office, which is, are you carrying out the duties, is what the law says? And so, the answer is yes. We've never had a misstep on, on the, the duties of the office. And so, it's, that's really what it is, is are you meeting the objectives of your office? And if we can successfully carry those out, then, then that's the standard. And so, I would rely heavily upon the council and say, does this feel like we're meeting the objectives of the, of the office?
So, let me ask a follow-up question. I thought we spent all year talking about how this council should not jump into other elected official offices. So, why would you, as an allegedly independent elected official that has been elected by the people to manage that office, why would you then outsource that to this council?
Uh, I'm not outsourcing anything. I, I'm, I'm.
You said you work with us for the metrics, but why wouldn't you give us the metrics?
I think there's a diff, I think.
Why don't you give us the metrics? Give the people the metrics.
I think there's a difference between an office just arbitrarily stepping in and saying, I'm going to have oversight over you, versus somebody saying, hey, I want to work together. I'm not saying you get to determine everything. What I'm saying is, I just want to work with you. And, and I think that's the message that I'm trying to bring with this, is just my general tone, I hope that's coming across, is I don't care about the money. What I want, want to worry about is audits. I want to care about the elections. I want to care about my staff, and I want to make sure that the duties are being taken care of. And we've done so much. I see only over the next year, more going, more coming together. And my goal is to work more closely with the council, to increase the relationship, to take the politics out of it, and by doing so, not needing a salary and being reliant upon the council for a salary. I just come to you and I say, let's work together. I don't care who's right, what is right, and let's do it.
I just, so one more question, because we can go on and on about this. And I, and the reason that I'm asking these, because I started this with government's hard, and we write laws down for a reason, so we know what they are, and we need to follow them. In your presentation today, you said that you wanted to turn the audits over to the audit committee. Now, we had an audit committee meeting earlier this year. Several members of this council, including our citizen representative, April 7th.
Mm-hmm.
We had a follow-up discussion about that from prior years. Obviously, they were pretty in-depth and detailed discussions, because this council has been very concerned about audits.
Yeah.
Very concerned about things that we have seen. Those minutes also should have been posted on the website, because those minutes were approved in the June meeting on June 2nd, and they're not there. And I would love for them to be in the public record, actually.
Yeah.
Because it will show that this council has identified issues that need to be audited earlier this year. And we have been pushed back against on that desire for more, more audits this entire year. I won't go chapter and verse, but I could. You cannot turn the audit function of the auditor's office over to that audit committee. That audit committee is set up for one reason, and that's to oversee the annual external audit that we do. They do not have the statutory authority to oversee audits. We cannot turn that over to them. And that, I guess, is what I'll end with, so we don't go on and on. We need to do this right.
Yeah.
And we do need audits, and this council has been after that all year. I want to state that emphatically, so that all the citizens know, this council has been after audits this entire year, and we've had pushback every step of the way. I'd be happy to quote the minutes if you'd like, or you can just take that as a stated fact. What would you prefer?
I think we both agree that there's been differences of opinion.
No, there's not differences of opinion. There's right and wrong when it comes to audits and the law. There's not differences of opinion.
I would be happy to turn my auditors as, over to the council, because the council has charge, if they want, over auditors as well, just like the executive does.
You can't just make up what your job is. It's in the law. Yes, I.
I, I understand. I, I don't want to cause any kind of contention on this point, just to say, regardless of how that occurs, audits are important, and that is one of my goals. And we have, we've only been ever allocated $20,000 to $30,000. This would free up another $30,000. But I, I, I digress. I just want to have it be known that I, I'm just trying to help the county with this, so I, I, I appreciate you, Paul. I do.
Jess, I do have one concern, and you've kind of addressed it a little bit, but I feel that as a county, and the offices and departments that are in the county are to provide good customer service to our constituents and all those people in the, in the county. I'm wondering how, my concern is, how can good customer service be done with a, a position that's supposed to be full-time? And yes, I, you know, you're not just sitting in your chair, waiting for a customer to come in, but there are times when a customer will come in and will need an answer, and will need someone to talk to. And if you're not available at that time, where is our customer service? Where has it gone? You know, who's, who's going to take care of those customers, and who's going to provide the service that we, as a county, want to provide to our people? And I just wanted to hear what you might say about that.
I appreciate the question. Regarding customer service, we have two individuals typically, no, this is typical. Obviously, staffing fluctuates, if somebody's sick, or if they're out on whatever, on leaves or, or various things. We, we typically have two people sitting up front. That was one of the initiatives that I did. I wanted to put in a survey. That was one of the things I wanted to do, is so that after people were leaving the office, they could take a survey of like, how do you feel about this, this, your customer service? Never got around to that, but I think we could. And so, customer service is kind of this huge balloon, I guess you could say. And in addressing that, don't quote me on that newspaper. That, that would not sound good in the newspaper. Come on. Let, let me, let me change that. Customer service is something that's very vast, and it means different things to different people. My staff have been empowered. They've been trained and empowered to find answers for people, again, because I'm not always there. And then I'm kind of that second tier, that if there's an, an issue that needs to be escalated, just like they have over this past year, they say, you know what, Jess is, is at the ballot center. We'll take down your contact information. Let him know you stopped by. He'll give you a call. Now, that is not to say that I'm not in office. I, I have, I have been in office over this past two weeks quite a bit, and during that time, no one has stopped by to, to see me and say, you know, I've got this issue. I had one person stop by, and they, it was more of a sales call than anything. But I, I think it, it would work out. And if, now, here's the other thing, is if it isn't working out, and you're getting calls of like, oh, I, I, I have this huge issue, and it's not being addressed, and it's not being taken care of, that, I think that's the types of things where we would address it ongoing, but they haven't been happening. I'm convinced, or I'm, I'm, I believe that they wouldn't happen, but I, I think that's where we could work together to say, if you're getting those, then I would be very open and humble to say, something needs to, some, something would have to be addressed.
Barbara, I've got a couple of questions, and, and I want to start out by asking the question to our county attorney. When an elected official is elected, that person becomes an individual that the people have chosen to fulfill that office. In this case, Jess has been elected to become the, the clerk auditor for four years. Now, the way it was that, it was shared with us many, many years ago, we had some challenges on the council, probably before anyone here came on, but we had a, we had a situation where we had a challenge, and we needed to work through it. And Attorney Daines, who was our attorney at that time, he sat down, and in a presentation, he made it very clear to the council that we have no ability whatsoever to remove an elected official. We don't have that authority. We, we, we still don't. Now, that's still true, isn't it?
Yes, so.
There's no way in this situation that the council or the executive can remove an elected official.
So, I guess to answer your question, I'll, I'll just explain the process that an elected official can be removed. So, for felony misdemeanor or malfeasance of office, which is failure to substantially perform the duties of that office, removal of any elected official in Utah at the county or municipal levels through judicial proceedings. So, the, the council could initiate, if, if the council makes a finding in your, your function as, as the oversight to all of our elected officials, finds that any elected official is failing to meet the, the basic function of their office, you could file something, or any taxpayer could file something in the district court. At that point, it comes to either the county attorney or the attorney general to decide, does that meet the definition under the law of, of either a felony misdemeanor or malfeasance of office? And at that point, if, if it does, then the county attorney is by statute tasked with the, basically, the prosecution of that in a civil action before the district court, before the presiding judge of the district court, and puts on evidence, and the judge at a, basically, a bench trial makes that finding, either that they have committed a high crime or misdemeanor, or there is malfeasance of office. And at that point, if there's a finding, then they can remove that elected official immediately.
That was a long explanation of a very simple question.
I, I am a lawyer, so.
Anyway, I'm not making fun of you, Dane, but anyway, this is, this is my take on it. We do not have anything pending that Jess has not fulfilled his responsibility or the clerk has. We haven't had a citizen. We haven't had anyone on the council. We've had a lot of lip service and whatnot, but as far as anything official, that he's not doing his job, we don't have any of that, do we?
I'm not aware of any complaint that's been made to the district court.
So, then as a result, the way that it's set up, that the council has authority over the clerk's office and their salary. That's the only thing that we have authority over. And, and as a result, I think the discussion that we have here today is, we cannot, you know, you got to be careful in these words. We can't get rid of Jess, because he's an elected official. The only people that can move him out of office unless he messes up really bad is the voters.
Correct.
And the voters have spoken not too long ago. Some of them may not be happy, but until our county clerk does something that causes him to be in question, he's a clerk for four more years. Now, with that said, I think we're in a, a situation as a council that our only, our only direction is this, is we need to decide how, because it is legal for him to go part-time, is how we work with him on a part-time basis, and what his salary will be for that part-time. We have to pay him, which is, is fine if he's going to work. The concern that I have is, I think it's been evident to us all, that he has done an excellent job of training his staff, and he's got him doing their elections. He's got him giving out, we keep using the word marriage license, and I guess that's, you know, one of the important functions. But as long as his offices is doing that, and we have no reason that he needs to be disciplined, I think our only discussion that we have here today is not why and how and what. It's been done. It's legal. We need to decide what is a fair compensation with direction as to how he makes his office function at a high level that it's at, and, and visiting. in visiting with, with him last night, and I don't know, he hasn't said it here today, but he wants to give it a, a period of time. And then he said that if it doesn't work and it's bad and all that, he's not unwilling to step down, meaning that he resigns. But that's up to him. That's not, it's not my option. It's not anyone else's office. It's, it's up to Jess. And so I get a little concerned about, we're always bombarding people on what they should do and what they shouldn't and what we're not happy about. We, we need as a council to get back to the thing is, how are we going to make this work? How are we going to proceed as a council? How are we going to proceed in administrating the county? And we'll get back doing the things that we should. Now, I tried to talk to Jess last night when he called me into forgetting about his other job and getting back to the job that he was elected to. And he's, he had his own opinion and it's up to him to express that. But anyway, I think that's our option is to, how do we allow him to continue to function in his assignment and how much we pay him? And other than that, it's just a whole bunch of back and forth and up and down. So maybe I've taken longer than you did. Anyway, that's my opinion. And Barbara and the council is that our only option is to, to discuss what he can do and what we're going to pay him for it. And I also want the council to know and the citizens to know that he has ran a fairly, fairly tight ship when it comes to the things that he's accomplished in the time that he's been there. He's no, he's no, I don't want to use the word dummy. He's a very bright and he's a very progressive individual with the things that he's been able to do and we should commend him for that. That's my opinion.
Gordon, I, I second that, too. I, I feel that we have at times thrown out a lot of criticisms, but the proof is in the pudding as far as what he's been able to accomplish and how the office is functioning now and the work that's getting done. And it's much more up to date than it ever was. And things are being responded to on a timely manner, in a timely manner. And as I commented earlier, really, his decision to go part-time is within the code. And again, our, our only, our only action is what the renumeration should be for him on an hourly basis rather than on a full-time basis. And that's really the only thing we can, we can talk about. We can criticize him. We can express our displeasure and our wishes otherwise, but we don't have, we don't have the power or the authority to do that, to do other than decide on the, on the renumeration side of the whole thing.
I mean, one of the things that just drives me nuts is when I watch on the news on the national platform and the craziness that takes place in the Senate and the House of Representatives and the lies they tell. They're flat-out lies. But until that people, until the people from those districts vote those people out, they're there forever. And you, it's wise the way the laws are written so that one opposing party can't put enough pressure to get another person's candidate out of office. And that's why it's written that way is so that we're protected. And I, I get so discouraged when I see on the national that old flat-out lies that we hear. They're proved to be lies. They're still expressed. They have a public opinion to them and it's legal.
Councilman Erickson, did you have a comment?
Yeah.
You want me to put my hand on your knee right off or what do you?
That'll, that'll be in the paper now. No, there's a couple of things. One is an opinion. One of them is, it wasn't very long ago, I, you've, you've come to us at different budget times and you've shared how swamped you were, how you, you needed additional resources, additional monies to get your, you know, election equipment, people, part-time, all these things. And I felt like we accommodated all that. And, and you've done well with that. Little did I know that we were getting to a certain point where we weren't needing to finance a full-time clerk auditor. I'm kind of mad that we have gotten you to a certain point and we have overfunded you to where we don't need the full-time clerk auditor. And I say overfunded because that's how, you know, we've, we've worked with that budget-wise. And that, by the way, Gordy, is in our responsibility.
Correct.
And we bought into that. And I don't think you were deceiving us at the time or, you know, I think, I'm sure things were, were looked at different. But that's the literal thing that's happened is we've overfunded you and the taxpayers have paid more thinking that we needed it. And then we find out that now we don't need it and it could stem from efficiency or I don't know. That's kind of weird. The other thing is, and this, this one's of my opinion part, is that I'm a voter. And I thought a vote counted, but apparently I, you know, when you vote for someone that they are the full-time clerk auditor, and you vote for that person as a full-time clerk auditor, then I think that we as elected official need to respect the voters. I honestly feel like we need to. I think we are, I know, you know, like your situation is, is, I think good things are happening in your life. And that's fine. But we can't deceive the public, deceive's a hard word, but we cannot promise one thing with their expectations, which we all know what their expectations were, and change those. Because I think now I start looking at every elected official's budget and start saying, okay, now how far are we overfunding that? Are we going to hear from them shortly? They're going to go part-time? I mean, all these things are, we've just started something that I just don't feel real good about. We've talked about this. But the bottom line is I, we need to respect the voters. And I know the voters voted for a full-time clerk auditor. That's all I have to say. So.
One more quick question because Carl and Gordon Bull said Jess is doing a good job and I think he's done a wonderful job in the clerk's office. And the elections office has been fantastic. But I just want to.
Can I get that on record, please?
I just want to say again and bring it back. This job is not just the clerk. It's the clerk slash auditor. We've tried, this council has tried and tried to increase that and, and in fact funded our own audit coming outside of that. That in itself is a full-time job in my mind and needs to be done. I just want to make that.
Well, can I just say I appreciate you? I, you know, over the past six years, you and I have never always seen eye to eye. But you've always been able to be straight with me. I've always been able.
I've ever pulled a punch.
Yeah, I've got some deep, deep bruises, but.
That'll be in the paper.
But I, I just want to say I appreciate you. This is your last meeting. People may get the impression that we don't like each other and I never want that to be the impression.
That's right. I think that's the, you know, that's, that's been the one thing I've learned, sitting in this seat, what gets reported isn't actually what gets done. And as Carl said, you know, there's conflicts inevitable and, and not everybody agrees and especially in this. But I hope everybody knows that whatever back and forth we've had, we've, we've talked afterward and, and have interacted this whole time and it's disagreements and it's both of us wanting to get it right. And I'm passionate about what I believe and want to get it right. So are you.
And I want you to know, Paul.
High standards and I think you do, too. And that's where some of that comes into play.
And I want you, as you're exiting, to know that if this doesn't work out, the council has my commitment that I'm not the end all be all. I would step aside.
All right.
One more question. I want to make sure. So will you guarantee that there is, as of right now, no organized method, that you are pre-planned, pre-planned method to replace you as of right now?
No, I, I would not go through this if I didn't have intentions to try and stay. I.
I just wanted to ask that one question.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jess.
And I just want to say, I don't want any contention moving forward. I'm going to remove myself from the meeting, but I just want to say thank you, Gina. Thank you for your service over the past six years. Gordon, it's been sixteen years, I believe, or is it eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years.
I said sixteen, but they forgot the two years that I served for Paul Cook's term.
And then, and so I just have to say Gordon's been tremendous. Gina's been good to work with. And then Paul, people don't know this, a fun story about Paul and I is that we're inexplicit, inexplicably connected like Harry Paul, Harry Potter and Voldemort. And you can choose who's who, but we, we ran against each other years ago and we both kind of encouraged each other to run in our different capacities. And so I, I just want to say I'm grateful for all of you.
And I have the Herald Journal story showing I beat him. I had to correct it, but they did print it.
Thank you so much, Jess. Appreciate your presentation.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you. All right. We are way past time. Yes.
Can we save Neil Abercrombie's hair? Because some of this other stuff might go long and it might be good to get him.
Can we do the public hearings, though?
That's what I'm concerned about. We have a lot of comments.
Is, is Mr. Abercrombie here yet?
I didn't see him come in.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Public hearing. We are needing to set a public hearing for ordinance 2022-28, comprehensive amendment to the Cache County General Plan.
Oh, that is the hearing.
That is the hearing. I'm sorry. I'm getting all mixed up here. Okay. So, public hearing. And it looks like Tim is going to make a presentation for us here.
He'll be ready in just a moment.
Okay.
And we got a slide one over there.
Come out and present it one.
What's the problem?
Thank you, Paul.
Good job.
I bet James is over here.
Going to put cherry chocolate in there?
Yeah.
You're going to have cookie with chocolate in it?
Yeah, cookies saying it.
Yep, I think.
Give me a memory. You're leaving. That one doesn't.
Bryson, do you want to come up and sit where Jess was to continue the minutes, please?
I am leaving.
Okay.
I don't see it. Oh, right here.
Okay, thank you, Bryson.
Barbara?
Yes.
Neil just texted me and said he's about ten minutes out.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
I'll just run you now.
Now I'm able to advance the slides.
That isn't the one we have here.
Able to move that back over so you can see your numbers?
Back over here. Advance the slides. How do I advance the slides?
I'm going to go get me another cookie here shortly.
We are set. Apologize for the delay and like to.
Sorry, Tim.
Oh, no problem. And more cookies is fine. But good evening and I appreciate this opportunity to share a brief overview of the final draft of the Cache County Comprehensive Plan. This plan was created through an extensive public engagement process with dedicated efforts by our steering committee members. We'd like to thank stakeholders, consultant team, and staff. The Planning Commission has conducted multiple reviews and has forwarded a unanimous recommendation of plan approval for your consideration. The plan has been shaped in response to input from over a thousand individuals that engaged in the Imagine Cache process through website visits, responses to online questionnaires, virtual mapping comments, stakeholder interviews, open houses, and workshops. This input represents a broad cross-section of the populated Cache Valley area, including urban and rural communities and surrounding unincorporated areas. Three plan elements are proposed, including the general plan document and two supporting appendices to support ongoing countywide collaboration. These include the Regional Collaboration Plan and the Urban and Rural Area Assessment and Cost of Services Plan. The general plan will function alongside existing and future county policy plans and provide guidance for updating the county code. The additional plans allow for more specific focus on elements such as transportation, housing, and trails. A key component of the general plan is the Future Land Use Map to guide future development. Much of the unincorporated valley area is agricultural where compatible lower-density residential development may also occur. The hatched areas seen on the Future Land Use Map adjacent to communities are locations where future city growth is anticipated. The pattern and timing of development near municipalities will require coordination between the county and our partner cities. The county must respect property rights within the unincorporated area while considering the future land use goals of each municipality. The proposed general plan goals and strategies are organized into five guiding principles, which I will touch on briefly. Heritage and stewardship. These policies recognize that even in the face of steady growth and development demand, Cache County's vast agricultural areas will be farmed for many years into the future. New development options, such as this flexible transferable development right tool, would allow property owners of non-contiguous parcels to consolidate development rights into one area known as a receiving zone and preserve another area known as a sending zone. This option could allow more property owners to benefit from development income while reducing development costs, preserving sensitive lands and ag lands. Heritage and stewardship strategies also encourage diversified farming activities to provide agricultural producers with value-added uses and secondary income. Here are several examples of agritourism, including small-scale commercial and accessory rural occupations that could be expanded in the county code. The second guiding principle for policies in the plan is the active lifestyles and recreation. These policies respond to our citizens' desire to access public lands and recreate along trails, including urban trails, soft trails, and even blue trails, as shown here in the beautiful Cutler Marsh. Trails can provide safe and healthy connections between neighborhoods and communities to public lands, natural areas, parks, transit, and other amenities. The countywide trails program serves to coordinate development and transportation investments to achieve a long-term vision of creating safe bike and pedestrian routes to conveniently access scenic and recreation areas. And if you haven't met our new trails coordinator, Landis Wenger, he is here in the audience and he's doing a wonderful job for us so far. The next principle is regional collaboration. And you see a variety of many topics here to coordinate with our partner municipalities through ongoing countywide planning to help identify agency and community roles, jurisdictions, decision-making authority, and regional service provision. Fourth policy category is valley connectivity and transportation. It focuses on continued coordination between communities to align and connect streets, infrastructure services, and establish rights away for future arterial and collector road connections. Coordinating transportation with new land use development is key to preserve mobility and to optimize use of transit to connect activity centers and employment to workforce housing areas. The county will continue to partner with our Cache County Metropolitan Planning Organization, Council of Governments, and the Cache Valley Transit District to consider land use decisions and growth while planning for future transportation demands. And finally, economic vitality, which encourages coordination amongst local governments, business leaders, and entrepreneurs to identify strategic locations for economic growth in both urban and rural areas. Working together to support new housing and support of a growing workforce is also critical to sustaining business growth. I'd like to now touch on the final draft of the Urban and Rural Area Assessment. The Planning Commission worked very hard on this and their edits and comments are reflected in the final draft. This tool provides countywide perspective for considering the potential benefits of shaping growth in ways that could reduce the cost of housing, reduce service costs, conserve water, and preserve sensitive land areas. Three growth scenarios are provided for the 2040 growth projections with a population. Three growth scenarios are provided for the 2040 growth projections with a population increase of about forty-eight thousand new residents, twenty-two thousand households, and about twenty-three thousand jobs. Each growth scenario provides insight and perspective related to fiscal and economic impacts and water use demand that can vary significantly depending on how we grow. This scenario, scenario one, is a more expansive growth pattern, developing more land, requiring more infrastructure and water for predominantly single-family homes on larger average lots. Scenario two emphasizes more of a clustered development pattern with a reduced growth footprint, less infrastructure, and lower water use to serve the same development. This development pattern provides opportunities for more land development, or, excuse me, for more land preservation and reserves more land for future growth and development. The third scenario is an even more efficient growth pattern with closer access to amenities that could be achieved through tools such as transferable development rights. This cost of services plan recommends additional study to better understand the current and future housing market such that the next generation might be able to achieve homeownership opportunities. So in conclusion, I would like to mention that the general plan will be published as both a principal PDF plan as well as an interactive story map, similar to this type of format that you see on the screen. This format can be more accessible to property owners, investors, and our community partners. At a public hearing held on September thirteenth here at the council, we received comments from individuals representing, there were three speakers representing two family land holdings totaling over five hundred acres of agricultural lands. Two additional speakers represented interest to purchase property in the county and pursue limited development and invest in specialized agriculture. These were individuals that have been exploring options and were invited to consider the general plan hearing and decided to share their interest that really it's about finding a balance between appropriate lower-density development and many with a desire to continue operating agricultural lands in a country setting in the unincorporated area. Just draw your attention to a few potential refinements. This could be considered a clarity correctness error, but our county code does refer to the general plan as the countywide comprehensive plan, and so just noting that our general plan could also be referred to as this term would keep that as an accurate cross-reference between our regulatory and policy code. And then just a correction of note in the the cost of services plan, the correct number of projected employees. There's just one more and more substantive potential modification for your consideration. The map on the left shows the original draft of Future Land Use Map around the Cache Logan, or the Logan Cache Airport. And with additional discussion and a follow-up public hearing with the Planning Commission, it was explored and the county, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the expanded potential future light industrial area that you see here surrounding the airport for contiguous and continuous potential future light industrial use that's consistent with a growth of Smithfield, southwesterly growth of Smithfield and westerly growth of Hyde Park. It so happened that after the hearing, we heard from property owners directly west of the airport that expressed, after the hearing, that they were not interested to be designated as that potential future land use and to remain agricultural and learn more that there are, there are challenges associated with developing that area with wet soils and very flat conditions for draining. That was discussed with the Planning Commission, and their feeling was that rather than holding another hearing to sort that out, they felt that they could defer to you as council to decide whether you'd like to go with the option A, as recommended, or B, if you felt that this was a better fit for now on the future land use map. So that's the only real substantive potential modification. And with that, invite any questions, comments, and potential action or continuation as you see fit.
Anything from the council? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here to address this issue? All right.
We need to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, sir.
Okay, we, it's been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing for ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We are going, Mr. Abercrombie, I think, has joined us. Thank you. We will ask you to do your presentation for us at this time. Thank you so much.
While he's on his way up, I just want to give Tim credit. Thank you for all of the work that you put into this. I appreciate it. And keep working on steep slopes. I got to give everybody from your office. Got to go out with that.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
How are you guys? Good evening. Good to see everybody. Apologize. I'm supposed to be here at five, and I left the Capitol a little late this afternoon, and it's a little snowy out there. A lot, a lot snowier in Salt Lake than it is here, actually, though.
Really?
The worst part of the drive was kind of that Davis County area, so sardine was easy. So I'm a really poor fill-in tonight for Mike Maurer and representing Governor Cox and Lieutenant Governor Deidre Henderson. But Mike threatened me that if I missed this opportunity, I would be potentially fired from the governor's office because he really wanted to express gratitude to a couple of outgoing council members. I just want to mention, so I should introduce myself, Neil Abercrombie. I'm Senior Advisor of Legislative Affairs and Policy to Governor Cox. For the past eleven years, I worked for Utah State University as Vice President of Government Relations. Still live here in Logan, now that I work for the governor. And just want to say, thank you. It's been an interesting week for us because I feel like a lot of the meetings we've had with the governor on Capitol Hill, we've been saying farewell to a number of excellent public servants who are leaving the state legislature. It's always one of the tough things this time of year, as we look forward to the start of a new calendar year and new opportunities. But often, of course, in election year, we're saying goodbye to a lot of people we work closely with. So in particular, I have three certifications, or certificates, certificates, sorry, of recognition. One to Gordon, which I thought it was a typo at first, recognizing you for seventeen years of dedicated service. So thank you, Gordon. Paul, for your dedication the last four years as well. And then Gina, your dedication the last five years on the Cache County Council. Before I hand these out to you, I just want to say, while I'm here, not only thanking you for this service from Governor Cox and Lieutenant Governor Henderson and Mike Maurer in particular, who does intergovernmental affairs for the governor's office. They, they all really value the role of our local governments and our county elected officials and the work you do, the tireless work of advocating on good transportation infrastructure, good housing policy, the master plan, law enforcement, social services, all of the things that we care deeply about as residents in this community. And I want to add, the last eleven years working for Utah State University, how much the university appreciates the partnership with the county as well. See a lot of friends in this room, and I know there have been a lot of important initiatives coming out of Old Main and for the university that really would not have gone very far without really the support of the county council as well. So with that, thank you. I'll just hand these out, grab my jacket and get out of your way and let you get on to your official business, so.
Don't they come up?
Yeah, I think they should come up for a picture.
Absolutely. We, take a photo real quick if you want?
Yes.
I mean, these are really official documents after seventeen years, so.
We really don't like the pageantry of this. We could just-
Oh, you're good at it.
Yeah, go down to the, yeah.
I can get even on your way up. Smile.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Stand right up here for a picture. I'd be happy to photobomb it.
Yeah. I'm going to sit back.
Don't smile. I'm getting out of this picture. Oh, I wasn't smiling.
Yeah, no, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Abercrombie. We're grateful that you were here.
Yeah, there's a few minutes on here. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're back to public hearing now. Okay. We made an amendment to the agenda, and I want to make clear, is the wording eleven B or nine B correct, or does it matter?
Eleven B, I think, is the correct word.
Okay, very good. Eleven B, correct wording, ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-five, an ordinance making a cost of living adjustment to the salaries of the Cache County elected officers. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address this? Okay, please come on up and state your name and-
Mark Ensign from Paradise. First thing I would like to say is I don't think the public has a very clear picture, I guess I could even use the term any real idea, of the work that our council members put in. And having run recently in the recent election, I became more privy to some of their challenges and some of the long hours that they work behind the scenes. I think publicly, we, you know, the face of the council is that we see them here twice a month in a council meeting for a few hours. And if we think that's all they do, we're really misinformed. There's so much more, so much time, so much of their own personal assets are brought into serving this county. And I can't thank the entire council, but especially tonight, Paul and Gina and Gordon enough for their service. And I just want you to know how much I personally have appreciated getting to know each of you and the service that you've given, or for the service that you've given to the county over so many years. Gordon, sixteen years, Gina, five, and Paul, four. And so when we're contemplating, you know, the idea of a salary increase for council members, Cache County Council, at least it's my understanding, is at the bottom end statewide, is this correct? Of compensation for council members at fifteen thousand, is it fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars a year? I know that a proposal was made that we increase that to thirty-one thousand dollars. I know some perhaps feel that maybe that proposal was a little rich. But whether, whether it's that or something less, I feel very strongly and just want to put my voice in and voice my support for the idea of some sort of a, of an increase. It's not really a cost of living increase. It's more to bring them at parity with other councils throughout the state to compensate them fairly for the, for the work that they do. Are we also in this hearing addressing the clerk move to part-time? So can I, can I speak to that?
Salary?
Salary, yeah, of any elected, just the salary is the only thing.
The only I can speak to is the salary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think that's up to the council then. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ensign. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address this? Please come up. Oh, we have a couple of them. All right. State your name, please.
I'm Chris Nielsen. I've never actually been to a county council meeting. I'm fifty-four, and I've somehow avoided this. I always wanted to come. I should have came when John White was here because I can't stand the guy, so I'm glad he's not here anymore. So if you have an opinion, you like him, I'm sorry, but, you know, anyway. I'm opposed to the increase, and basically because of the way it's presented. It is presented on an eight percent cost of living, but I can do the math, and from sixteen to thirty-one is not eight percent. I've run my own business for thirty years, and I'm a trim the fat kind of guy. If it's not needed, I cut it out. With Jess, if somebody in the government can go part-time and we have to pay less money because there's not that much, great, you know? But maybe if you want to keep somebody full-time, maybe you get rid of his assistants. This is my argument with government, is everybody wants a secretary so they can go golf more or watch more soap operas or whatever it is. I understand the council, you put in a lot of time, and hey, sixteen thousand isn't much. But if you want to essentially double your raise, let's state to the public, it's, we are the cheapest council in the state. We need to catch up with times. Let's not say it's a cost of living increase and then not do it. I just, I would really like some fair, honest play. Some of you I've known for a long time. Some of you I met in my tax appeal this year. I wasn't happy on the outcome because I think I was ignored. I'm not happy with that. I wish the acting assessor was here today because he's probably going to get sued because of his comments. A lawsuit of discrimination. So I think we need to be careful what we do. I've talked to him several times since then, and his attitude is, I'm just doing what the people want. But how many of you in the room wanted to pay more this year? Probably none of you, right? But he's told me, I'm just doing what the people want. I don't believe that. So for, for an increase, I'd say absolutely not, unless we announce to the people, well, we're just going to, this is what it's going to be, keeping up with the state, not cost of living. Because, hey, how'd I get a cost of living increase too? But due to circumstances, my living has come to a screeching halt. I mean, real estate's doing nothing now because buyers, my buyers have all walked. They can't afford eight, eight and a half percent. That's where we're pushing. I just want honesty. That's all I want, and that's what I expect from everybody. I don't know Jess's job, really. In fact, I don't know most of your jobs, but I hope you're honest and in it. And like you said, if I, I'm not needed, hey, I'll take a dollar. But I know there's been questions brought up, well, what are you really doing? What's your intent? Are you working somewhere else? I don't know. But that's all I want to say. I just want some honesty in it. And if it's, if it's an increase because you're working long hours and you need to catch up with the state, that's great. I think we just need to tell the people that. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nielsen.
Before we hear from the next question, can I just clarify, I didn't remember that we advertised this as a cost of living.
Yeah.
So there must, there must be some misunderstanding there. I just wanted to clarify that. I don't believe that we done did, so.
Thank you.
Rick Mayer, I'm from Logan. City governments, like most entities, are all trying to attract good people. And I served six years on the Ogden City Council, and people don't realize the hours and the research and the timeframe and the commitment that a council goes through. And in, there are a lot of cities across the country that the councilmen are full-time positions. Take Chicago. They have like eighty. It's crazy. But I would be an advocate for having council be a full-time position. That will never happen. But I'm a firm believer of, in this day and age, you get what you pay for. Because the people serving on this council now are doing it because they love the county and they love the state. And they're not being compensated properly, and so I'm all for it.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else like to address?
I would.
Yes, thank you, Dan.
And I just want to echo those same sentiments. I know that there's been statements made in the press that this is a two, two-day-a-month kind of job. From the county attorney's office, we work with each of you much more than that. I see the hours that each of our council members put in outside of the time that they're in this, this room where the public's seeing it. They, they come to committee meetings, they meet with department heads and other elected officials. So I just like to set that record clear that there's much more to this job than sitting up here for several hours every other Tuesday.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else like to address that?
My name's Keegan Garrity. I reside in Logan. And first off, I just want to thank you for your service, Paul, Gina, and Gordon. I appreciate it. And I've had the opportunity to run a campaign, and even that, I know, takes tremendous amount of time and appreciate it. And one thing Paul said earlier tonight that I really appreciated, and one thing I appreciate about Paul is that you're usually objective and usually look at numbers and law. And I think politics has the tendency to get emotional, and I appreciate just being able to look at things for what they are. One thing that's always kind of, I guess, bothered me about raises in government is, unlike the public sector, unlike the public sector, a lot of times they have nothing to do with performance. And it's also a blanket raise for everyone, right? And I think what Paul said earlier tonight about the clerk that I really liked was, let's establish some metrics to be able to evaluate success. And so I don't know if there's a self-audit or self-reflection or introspection, but that's one thing I think that would be great, is to look at, you know, what are we really here for? Let's look at the duties of the job and have we performed them. And I'm not saying, you know, it's not up to me to say whether you have or you haven't. I think I'll have that opportunity when I get to elect other people, but that's one thing that I think, you know, might be worth considering in the future is being able to look at, you know, did we accomplish what we set out to do? So as far as the clerk goes, I think, you know, that's ultimately up to you. A comment was made earlier about potential deception. I'm a voter, so I just wanted to speak to that and say, I didn't feel deceived when I elected Jess. I chose him because I know he's a responsible steward, and hopefully as what we saw tonight, we saw that it's not about the money and that he really truly does want the best for the county, and that's why I elected him. And I wouldn't blame him or anyone else if their family situation changes or if in their personal life, something comes up that creates an opportunity. I think, you know, that a lot of us have to look at that first. And I do appreciate people's public service, but I don't think that is the most important thing. And so whatever you determine there, I'm confident you'll determine something that's fair. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Is there anyone else that would like to address this?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we close public hearing, ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to eleven A, consideration of action, excuse me, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight, a comprehensive amendment to the Cache County General Plan, a comprehensive amendment to the Cache County General Plan, including the Regional Collaboration Plan and Urban and Rural Area Assessment, Cost of Services Plan appendices, and Plan Elements.
That was a mouthful.
That was a mouthful, that's right. Okay.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Imagine that.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Tim, thanks for all your work and for the work of everybody involved with this.
Thank you.
I know it took a lot of effort and come up with a really nice-looking document as well, which is readable and it's pretty to look at, which I think is a good point. So some of the questions that I have is, talks about regional and it's never really defined, does regional include outside of Cache County? Or is it just Cache County cities that we're talking about here or the organizations in Cache County? Can you help me understand what regional means? I didn't seem to find a definition.
Sure. My mind is going to reference that this is, this is a county general plan but with a county-wide emphasis and perspective. So it primarily focuses on the unincorporated area but is mindful and seeks to be comprehensive with a county-wide perspective. I'm not aware of a specific definition of regional, and that could be provided, but the scope is Cache County only as a region.
And then I was trying to understand, a lot of the documents talk about recommendation or guidance, but it seems at the same time that also talks about implementation and then, you know, you talked about how it will help us update code. So are we actually just setting ideas or are we actually voting for this to actual set county policy and those policies are contained in all the details in these documents?
This, that's a great question, and it is a policy document. The plan does make clear that, doesn't necessarily bind the county or the council to adopt in codified or regulatory form these policies, but they at least are to be given consideration when forming policies, or excuse me, when adopting code updates or regulatory policies.
And one final question, Tim, is, I was rather confused about why law enforcement was included in a land use document. Can you help me understand why we talk about the sheriff's office, the other stuff, you know, water, sewer, I get that, but why law enforcement?
Oh, and are you talking specific to this reference? And it's not showing on the screen, but...
Janine.
Yep. Yep. Reject and duplicate, there we go.
In the Regional Collaboration.
Yes, and that was part of the original scoping of that, and apologize while I find the right spot here. I first mentioned that the Urban Rural Area Assessment Cost of Services Plan, they are studies to support, to provide information and support to ongoing regional collaboration. And part of the original scope was trying to understand how different growth patterns relate to cost of delivering a variety of services. In my brief presentation, I emphasized the infrastructure, the water usage, and the fiscal and economic impacts. In the appendix, and this is an appendix with the support of OROX Engineering, they did an analysis of law enforcement and they looked at it more on a per capita basis. There were no conclusions reached necessarily that where development happens and the density of development, there were no conclusions about one development pattern costing more than another, but it was just an acknowledgement that on a per capita basis, there is a need to increase law enforcement and emergency services. And so that's documented in that appendix to the appendix in the Cost of Services Plan. But it's more informational and to support ongoing regional collaboration.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Was there, did you have questions?
Yeah, I, my concern was that, you know, as this came to us and in reading a lot of that, that's, that is, the county-wide Urban and Rural Area Assessment and the Regional Collaboration Plan, both of them added to this, that's a lot to digest. It's a lot to go through to see all those effects and how it's going to work, and I'm worried when you mentioned that, that if this was passed, you know, this is policy, and I've seen a couple things creep into this plan that has, that has some concerns, that these are nice ideas, but I don't want to pass if we're gonna call those policies. And I've got, that's why I've got some deep concern, and I look at, I'll look at that and say, I think we need to look into it a little bit deeper, a little longer. Therefore, I would say that we move to postpone the passage of this until January, that we can look at it a lot more, with a lot more detail and work with it. So, because there are, there are parts of it, I just, I've got a little bit of concern, but, you know, we've kind of had a lot of things going on the past month that we, this scene here, kind of had to take second, third, and fourth place, you know, back behind everything else because there was more pressing things going on.
Happy to set up another work meeting if that'd be helpful between now and a continued...
And if we maybe plan, we'll plan something like that maybe in January to, and then get the final, the only problem is our new, newly-elected council will, you've got some reading to do, so.
We better send it to them now so they can get started.
Yeah. Merry Christmas, by the way.
And that, that's a motion?
And I...
Yeah.
And it's been seconded, okay, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we postpone ordinance twenty-two, twenty-two dash twenty-eight until January of, and possibly have a workshop, another workshop on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair, I might point out also that everything under eleven is initial proposals, and so to act on them, we'd have to waive rules anyway.
Thank you.
And so it's not something that we have to do tonight.
Okay, great, thank you, Councilman Ward. Thank you, Tim.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Carl, to that, maybe Dane can help us with that, there actually is an ordinance that whatever isn't finished by the end of the session, which is December, has to start over. Dane, could you speak to that and how we need to make sure we follow that ordinance?
Yes, so any business that is not concluded by the end of the session, which is the end of this year, will need to be re-proposed. So placing it on, you can place things on the agenda, but it's gonna need to be officially re-propo, my tongue's getting... To the council.
Okay.
And so keep that in mind when we're setting stuff out, that when we set the agenda for the first council meeting, there needs to be, we'll need to go through this step again for the initial...
So it'll be initial or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
But then it would receive a new number, too.
New ordinance number?
Yes, it'll receive a new number.
The big two-three.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We can work through that.
Yeah, we can do that. All right, very good. All right, again, eleven B, an ordinance making a cost of living adjustment to the salaries of the Cache County elected officials. Now, this does say cost of living here, but we've determined it is not a cost of living, correct?
Right, it wasn't.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, we had a little confusing.
Because that was actually done earlier.
Yeah, that was done earlier.
They're back in the, you know, in, what, October?
Yes.
Chris, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
Because it was a mistake, so.
Okay, how do we want to proceed with this, council? Where it does say cost of living, do we need to...
The ordinance itself has the language that's on nine B.
Nine B, thank you, Janine.
So that's the ordinance itself is nine B then?
But shouldn't the Cache County Council be out and be elected officials or officers? So it's a combination of nine B and eleven B?
Right.
If we want to change any others, we can amend it.
I do have to, I guess, express the concern of how it was noticed.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
If it wasn't noticed correctly by the title, if the public had notice of, because that's what's required for changing the salary of any elected official, is notice in a public hearing. So if the public wasn't adequately noticed, that we were going to discuss the other elected officials. So I don't know which one of those was noticed out for public hearing. It looks like it was just the county council, if that's what the public hearing was set for.
Thank you, Dane. All right, council, what would you like to do with this?
I didn't become any clearer after all of that. So maybe we noticed it for just the council, so we can't talk about any other elected officials in this because of the way it was noticed in the public hearing on nine B, and the way that was noticed wasn't a cost of living adjustments, it was just a salary increase. So we're talking about salary increases for the council only in this.
That would be my recommendation, just because of the lack of, potential lack of notice.
And that's how the ordinance is actually written up aligns with what we just said.
And I, I think there was a misunderstanding when it got noticed because I think that we were talking about all elected, just making it broad, so.
And that was my understanding from being in the meeting.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, I'm not, you know, I'm, in the future, maybe we need to be more careful, make sure that we're very explicit of what it's gonna say when we vote on it, so.
Yeah.
I'll just state categorically, but I'm opposed to salary increases for Cache County council members. I mean, I've always felt that, and I'll just state it again, but yes, we put in a lot of hours, a lot of time, but we don't rely on that for, for living expenses, and I apologize, some are still working and sometimes you have to trade your regular job for time spent on the council, and I recognize that. But at least as for me, as an individual, again, I think Barb was the same way. When I ran for office, I didn't know I even got paid, so that wasn't the purpose for running.
I appreciate the public's comments today on this. I'm one of those guys who works in, in the last few weeks for budget and everything else, I have spent a lot of time for my job here. However, given that, I don't want to be the one who votes myself a raise of this proportion either. So I, I appreciate the opportunity to be of service. I also know that we need to make it so we have, as was brought out, that others want to run who may not be in that circumstance, that they can't serve and be paid, so it's a delicate thing, but at the same time, I'm not, and I appreciate Paul making the motion and Gina in it, but I'm not ready to vote for myself to have a raise of that substantial amount, so.
Council, I would make a motion to amend this then, because we are falling behind, and it is, we do want to have good people on council and we want to make sure it's not a burden of having to leave your job, and at the same time, definitely services involved. I would move to amend the council member's salary to twenty thousand and the council chair to, somebody do the math, whatever, the one point two-five amount would be for that.
We have a motion on the floor.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Okay, I'll amend my motion, make it twenty-four, and then whatever the accompanying council chair.
Add a one point two-five.
Add one point two-five percent.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we are amending the pay to an even twenty-four thousand, is that correct? And the council chair, whatever that figures out to be, by a one point two-five, together with a one hundred dollar per month vehicle stipend. All in favor?
Aye.
Should we just, can we discuss it anymore?
Oh, sorry, yes, please do. Go ahead.
You know, I, it's, I've had, I've had people call me about this, and it wasn't, I thought for sure that they would be cussing and complaining, that we were, you know, that we even thought about a raise at all or, you know, increasing our, our compensation. But I, all of them called and, and they were flat out telling, you guys aren't earning, you guys are not making enough, you are not compensated enough for what you guys do. I was, I was shocked to hear that because usually, you know, it's the opposite of that. I'm, I'm not so sure about, you know, how we kind of complicate things with a hundred dollars a month, vehicles stipend, all that kind of stuff. I just, I think we just clear it all up and we get rid of that, that part, and just, you know, that we amend that, amend that motion to strike out the hundred dollar a month vehicle stipend and just, that'll just all be part of that extra, that whoever's a chair and stuff, to just absorb it within that extra that they get. Unless you, other people that have been chair, you feel like that's needed?
If you include it, I, it would be, if I did the math right, the chair would make thirty thousand. Twenty-four thousand times one point two-five is thirty thousand, and I think you could include the hundred dollars a month in there.
And I know down at UAC, when we were down there, the Utah Association of Counties, they, you talk numbers with them and they just look at us up here like, what is your problem? You guys aren't compensated anything, you know, can we, compared to the rest of state, we aren't, you know? But again, I don't think any of us ever got in this to be compensated, but you look down the road, I think there needs to be some sort of compensation to lure quality people, I hate to say like, I don't hate to say, but quality people, even like Nolan and Paul and you guys, they're dropping, you know, your work to say, hey, yes, you know, I can, I can still maintain things and be compensated and still do a good job, so. That's all I have to say about that, so that is an amendment.
Okay.
And it will need to be seconded and voted on.
The amendment?
Okay.
So first you vote on the amendment.
Okay. Okay.
First his amendment, and then we vote on.
His amendment's just to strike the $100.
Right, okay, we've had a motion for an amendment to go ahead and approve the salary for council members for 24,000, correct?
Correct.
And what was it for the, what was?
It was 30.
30,000 for the council chair without the $100 stipend, right?
Right, we have to take his, Dave's amendment first, so we have to vote on removing the $100 stipend.
Okay, so with that said, all in favor?
Remove the $100.
Or to remove the $100 stipend, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. All right, now, we have another, do we need to go on to another amendment, correct?
It's to amend the ordinance to be 24,000 for council and 30,000 for chair.
All right, and have we, and we've had a second on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we make the council member's salary 24,000 with the council chair earning 30,000, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so five to two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So now we've got it down to vote on the actual, do we want to pass it or not?
Yes, as amended.
Before we do that, I'll just say, I think there needs to be a service component in what we do. I don't think if you're paid what you earn in the private sector, you can walk around saying, hey, we're public servants. There needs to be some, you know, there's, there needs to be something to it, that you're giving of yourself. For folks that are interested in running for this job, it's been said tonight, it's not just two meetings a month, and it's definitely not. There's boards and committees and meetings that you go to, and they're scattered throughout the time, some weeks are heavier than others. So if you have a full-time, nine-to-five job, you're on somebody else's dime, this is a pretty tough thing to be able to do. You're going to have to take some vacation days and things. For the folks that are self-employed or have more flexibility, we've been able to do that, but at the same time, then you're leaving your employment and things that you have to do, make that time up somewhere else, come do this. I put this on the agenda because for the last four years I've been in Nolan and Carl's seat, I made a commitment when I ran for this office, that I'd serve my term, and I'd take what I got in running for it, I made that decision, and I did that, and now I'm going to be gone, and I know what this requires, I know what service that these folks give. And while you need to have some service, you also need to be rewarded, or we can go, heck, I'd be fine if we all went to a volunteer county government, we'd get a lot less government, and we'd probably be a lot better off. But since that's just a pipe dream, I put this on there, and I'm going to vote for it, and as a taxpayer, as a citizen, I'm voting here, and I'm not going to take advantage of it, but I, I'll sleep well tonight, voting for this.
Thank you, Paul.
Ditto what Paul said so eloquently.
Very good.
Gordon, you got anything?
I'm being pretty quiet.
You're riding off in the sunset, you gotta get, gotta get paid for one more time.
All right, do we need to take any more action on this then, Paul?
Yeah, we need to vote on the amended ordinance.
Okay.
Well, then, Gordon, you want to say anything?
Does anybody have any other thing to add to this?
We have a motion on the table for this one.
Yep.
Yeah, call the question.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been a motion and seconded, correct? That, are we going to waive the rules?
Waive the rules.
Yeah, waive the rules, and a vote for 2022-35 with the $24,000 for council members with a $30,000 per year for the council chair. Is that all I need to say? Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Thank you, council.
Good job.
Council?
Yes.
Would you be willing to reopen 6C for just a moment?
Well, let me see, we've got.
I think you'll.
What's council's decision?
We spent a lot of time on it, but how much time do you need?
Do you have something new?
Yes.
I'm fine with it personally.
Yeah, yeah, something new, sure.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Bradfield, thank you.
So I walked away, I walked away, and, you know, as an elected official, you don't usually sit there and dwell on your decisions, but I, I think I need to amend what I had talked to you about earlier. I felt, I felt sick about it, as far as something, that's not what I want to be the statement to you. I felt that, I sat down and I wrote down my thoughts, because something was amiss, and I need to, to, one, I think I could do it, I want that to be very clear, I think I could do the clerk auditor job part-time, but somebody new will not be able to. And, one, I'd like to thank those who defended that, and that's all of you, for saying, you know, we'll give that the opportunity, but I, it's difficult to step away, but as I sat down after the meeting, and my staff has asked me to stay, and people in the community have reached out and asked me to stay, but I realized that every single promise that I made to the voters has been kept, and it was as I was going over that list of items that I was presenting to the council, I thought, what, what is there remaining for me that I promised that I would do? And I think when you have promised, there's two things, one, you should serve out your term, but then, there's another, and that is if you have fulfilled your duty as an elected officer, and you've done what you've promised to do, I think, I think it's time for me to begin stepping away, and I'll work with the council to make that determination of timing. As you know, things are in flux in my office, obviously, we're bringing in a couple of new people. I believe that 90 days, the office will be prepared for such a transition, and I'll work with the council chair to make the next step. So instead of saying, I'll work with the next, work with the council chair to see how it's going in 90 days, I think let's, let's look at 90 days as the target to make sure that the office is, is in good shape for transition. And so I'd like to, as much as it's a difficult thing to say, I think that's the right direction. It's time for somebody else to move into the seat, so.
So you're offering your resignation effective in 90 days, is that what you're saying, Jess?
No, I'm offering in 90 days with the evaluation of the council chair to make sure that the office is prepared for that, that transition. I'd like, I believe that in 90 days, it will be ready, so if you want to say 90 days is the target, that's fine, but I think, obviously, the office had asked me to stay, they're not quite ready for that transition, but it's time to begin that, and so let's begin with a target date of 90 days for the transition. Will you accept that, council?
I'm not sure I understand if you're, I'm confused. You're not going to resign in 90 days, but you're transitioning to resign in 90 days.
I'm going to make sure that the office is prepared with a target date of 90 days to transition out of the office. I think it's time. I, I, I was not going to do that. I had every intention of, of saying, no, this is what needs to happen, we need to, I need to stay, but then, like I say, so let's just put a 90 days resignation on it. I, I feel like 90 days will be the, will be prepared. So for that, I'd just like to say thank you for, thank you for the opportunity. You've been, at times, difficult to work with, and at times wonderful to work with, and I'm sure you'd say the same thing, and just going along with what was said earlier, but I don't know why that change in me just said, no, it's, it's time to allow somebody else to occupy this seat, and, and when it's time to move on, you just have to accept that. And so the office is, the office will be fully ready for somebody new, and my commitment is to help whoever occupies that chair to, to, to be successful. I know it won't be Paul, you're, you're a libertarian, but I, but I, I just hope that whoever occupies the seat isn't an election denier, is someone who will occupy the seat and do that which is just, using the auditing powers, and that they will continue on the goal, with the goal to make government more efficient, to make it more effective, and so in 90 days, I will tender my resignation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Thanks for that update. All right, moving on to 11C, ordinance 2022-37, an ordinance amending Chapter Two of Title Two of the Cache County Code regarding disclosure of conflicts of interest by county officers and employees. Was there someone?
Explain a little bit, maybe Dane could explain more if needed.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
One of the things that we had been talking about in the ordinance and policy review committee was going through and making sure that our policy and ordinances about ethics and disclosures and everything were up to date, and so in working with Jarris, with the county attorney's office, he recognized the need to put the disclosure of conflicts of interest into our county code, and this is just basically verbatim taken out of state law and inserted as a brand-new section into our county code. Do you want to explain further, Dane?
And so, so all of our, our county officers and employees are already subject to this, both in our county policy manual and by state law. Talking through this with members of my office and the policy and ordinance committee, we thought it would probably be good to incorporate this into our county code, both for notice purposes and, and frankly, the state code is very large, our county, our personnel and policy manual is more geared towards employees, this puts the public at, the county code is significantly easier to navigate, to see what our county officials and employees, what their duties are under the law, and so this just makes it more accessible to the public, and is just verbatim, basically the same law that they're already subjected to at the state level.
Okay, thank you, thank.
Is there a timeframe on this? Like, they renew this every year?
Yes, so if you have, under state law, you need to disclose any conflict of interest immediately, and then here, they're required to disclose that conflict, when there is a conflict that's disclosed, it goes before the legislative body, so the council, to either approve them to continue that conflict, or to deny them approval. And under state law, which is incorporating our code, failure to do so is mandatory dismissal from, from employment or removal from office if you're an elected official, through the, if you're an elected official through the process I described in a long-winded manner earlier to Gordy's question, and then if you're a merit employee, it would just be through the typical process for merit employees to have their employment terminated.
Is there a statement they sign at the beginning of each year?
So at, when we do our employment evaluations, that's part of that every year, so those are included through HR, they have to sign, acknowledging that they understand what's required under the County Employee Officers Ethics Act by state law, and our, our own personnel and policy manual.
Okay, great, thank you, Dane.
In addition to that annual signing, throughout the year, if a conflict does arise, then they need to disclose that conflict midterm, correct?
Yes, yes, before the, technically, before the, they start engaging in the behavior that would be a conflict, it should be disclosed and approved, and then on an ongoing basis every year.
So I'm under this same thing in my work, but sometimes life gets in front of you, so is there a training that's going to happen on that, or is there a duration of time to report that, I'm just?
Well, so, so at this point, we're putting it in code, it's, for as long as anyone's been employed here, this has been state law.
Okay.
And it's, it's a harsh law, there's a reason, reason it's that harsh, that, that's an unfortunate, I, I hope that all county employees and officers are following what's already required of them by, by state law, but as far as giving immunity or something, by state law, we don't have that authority to grant a period that, that someone can come in and turn it in, even if they've been doing it for years, that's just.
I wasn't looking for immunity, I'm looking for a timeframe, I mean, I start a directorship or something, do I have 30 days in which to file that, or is there any time limit on that?
It, so directorship, like a department head?
Yes.
That, that should be filed before you start your official.
Okay, that's what I wanted to see.
Yes.
Which is a good thing, because it gets people, this, we ought to get this ingrained in our minds, so that we're always being open, government can be more open, and we have transparency, I think that's the intent of this, this law too, is, you know, you've got to do it, make sure that you're doing it, so people know what your conflicts of interest are.
I agree.
And just to talk about the training, I have talked to David and to Amy about a county-wide training like we do for some of our other defensive driving, harassment, putting something together, so our employees are getting training on this, so there aren't violations in the future from their negligence.
Thank you. Yes.
I, I read through this, and I think this is a, I think we need to do these things. For one thing, I think that any way possible that we could increase the integrity of the governance of Cache County, and this is one of those things that does that, we need, we need to have in our ordinances, so.
Thank you.
And this is for everybody, even elected officials, and I think that's a great point you made, Dave, just because there's a lot of institutions need, are important for society, and we need to have trust in the institutions, and the more we can do to make sure that that trust is well-placed, and the people that are in those institutions aren't using them to their own personal advantage, even the, even just the avoidance of impropriety, because if something happens, even if you didn't really do anything wrong, but it looks bad, the trust that people have in, in government is eroded, and we can't afford that erosion.
I thought I would make a motion to waive the rules and approve ordinance 2022-37.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the rules and approve ordinance 2022-37. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Right, moving on to 11D, ordinance 2022-38, an ordinance amending 3.04 of Cache County Code Regarding Budgets.
Okay, this one is from me, and there's two parts to this. First, I'll mention that I added a section about modifying the budget. The council has had a practice over the last several years that we do budget openings, that's our slang for modifying the budget, for those of you not familiar with our slang. We've had them noticed for having a hearing for the first week of the, our first meeting in March, June, September, and November, and that's been our practice, but we haven't written it down anywhere, and so I thought it would be a good idea to put it into code and have it there, so that we have an orderly way, and department heads know when the next budget opening is coming, so they can plan accordingly, and they know, hey, I'm, I need to change this and this, I will put in a request for this budget opening. That said, I also added language that if there's an emergency, the council can approve a special budget opening, as long as it follows the noticing requirements that we have. as long as it follows the noticing requirements that we have. The council has to set a public hearing in a council meeting. And then there's just some language at the bottom that is kind of like what we can't change, which is just standard that I got out of everything else in code about no decrease in amount appropriate for appropriated for reduction of any deficit and no budget increase shall exceed estimate revenue for such budget. The other part I also added was to add item H. One of the things that we've noticed as a council is how important it is to have the budget include transaction detail and account details, because the money and how it is spent for the public is really in those details. And so I thought it would be a good idea to put in code that all the budget, grand budget, tiny budget, submitted budget, final budget, budget amendments shall include line items of account details and line items of transaction details for each account so that we can be transparent and we know and the public knows where those tax dollars are going.
Okay, is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, waive the rules and make a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-38.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the rules and approve Ordinance 2022-38. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, moving on to ordinance, I mean, item E, Ordinance 2022-39, an ordinance amending Section 2.28 of the Cache County Code Regarding Part-Time County Officers. Do we have anyone to address this on that?
Well, I can just say this is simple. It just strikes out the language that a county officer can give notice that he or she chooses to work part-time. And I will say that I'm very supportive of this. I believe that when people are elected to those offices, and obviously the count, the council is part-time and we're part-time already in in code and the Organic Act. But for the other offices, people expect that they're going to have a full-time employee there to oversee the office and manage it and be available to them as a member of the public. And so I can understand that perhaps this was originally and has probably been in code a long time because as a smaller county, it could make sense to have somebody do part-time. But now that we're a county of 130,000 people, we need full-time elected officers. And so I would be supportive of of striking that language.
And to follow up on that, I think Dave Erickson mentioned it, if I'm remembering in previous discussions, that these are, these are working positions, that the recorder records things, the assessor assesses things, the clerk watches out for the records of the county, the auditor audits the books, council sets legislation. And so those are working positions, the people need to be there doing the actual job and not just having a ceremonial title and dispersing the work to folks that aren't accountable to the voters.
I was going to say, I, with that, with that said, and other, and we've talked about earlier in that, I would therefore move to waive the rules and that we pass Ordinance 2022-39.
Second.
He has been moved and seconded that we waive the rules and pass Ordinance 2022-39. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain. Because I just have the study done enough.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item F, Ordinance 2022-40, an ordinance amending Section 2.16 of the Cache County Code Office of Public Defender.
Madam Chair, could we have our public defender, Mike McGinnis, come up and talk to us about this ordinance?
Okay.
We don't have a, this list, we don't have a public defender office listed in our ordinance, and so he's added it, Mike.
Yes, I think it's a, as I mentioned earlier, as we're, the state, we're trying to become an official office and be independent from the Cache County Attorney's Office, the county. And having that ordinance, I think, lays out the duties of our office, and it will help our office grow in the future. We could add hopefully more employees and and things like that. But there hasn't been an official office of our duties and our responsibilities. So I think that would be important for that outlined in the ordinances.
Thanks.
I have two possible amendments. The first amendment that I would make is to choose, to this is number B. Where it says the managing defender shall be chosen by the, oh, it actually says by the twice, county executive and approved by majority vote from the county council. I would strike that and replace it with language consistent with the rest of the department heads in our code, which would say the county executive shall appoint the managing defender with the advice and consent of the county council. Just to make it consistent. Does that sound okay, Dane?
Yes, I think that is a need to change.
I'd second that amendment.
Thank you. I was writing it down here. Okay. All right, we have a motion.
Andy will second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the rules and approve Ordinance 2022-40 with the following amendment.
Actually, just amend it first, and then I have another amendment as well, and then we can approve the ordinance, I'm sorry. I'm making it confusing. So my motion is to amend the ordinance by striking the verbiage under item B and replacing it with that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we do pass an amendment to Ordinance 2022-40 with the wording, the county executive shall appoint the managing defender with the advice and consent of the county council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next.
The second amendment that I would propose, what we've been talking about is is having the, your office, you know, collaborate with another office in the district. So, but we didn't put anything in in code about that. So I would propose an amendment, item H. With the approval of the county council, the public defender's office may enter into agreements with other counties in the first district regarding indigent defense services. Does that sound okay?
Yes, I I think that's a good amendment. I'd second that one as well.
Very good, thank you.
Can you get the handwriting?
All right, so now we, oh, did we have a second or not?
I did.
Oh, okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded that we provide another amendment on Ordinance 2022-40 with adding item H stating, with the approval of the county council, the public defender's office may enter into agreements with other counties in the first district regarding indigent defense.
Services.
Services, thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so now we're done amending it.
Okay.
Talk about it for a second. As I've said, this is, government can do a lot of things, most of them not well, but this is a core function of what we do.
It is.
Is.
The court system.
And providing people with a defense and a proper defense. And we need to make sure that all parties come to the table equally prepared, and we're not letting people come without that defense. It's a huge service that they've done, and I think making it official and and establishing it is what we need to do as a, as a council and as a county and as government. So with that, I would make a motion that we waive the rules and pass Ordinance 2022-40, amending Section 2.16 of the County Code Office of Public Defender.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the rules on Ordinance 2022 with, dash 40, with the amendments and amending Section 2.16 of the Cache County Code Office of Public Defender. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I mentioned those amendments, by the way, I forgot about that.
So one question, Madam Chair, while we're still on this subject, you know, there's been working toward having Box Elder, as Mike explained earlier, work with us. And they have proposed it in our local agreement, but we did not get that specifically on the agenda. So I'm not quite sure what, we had so much that we threw at Janine at the last minute. So, thank you, Janine, for you did great. So I would just want to check in with Dane and see what the best way to move forward. Would it, just a motion to to move forward with the i, the idea, since it's the executive that signs it, what would you say is the best?
Yes, because it's the executive that signs it, the council's approved this, given, given Mike the 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 authority. It is with the approval of the council, so I think he has the, has the authority to go negotiate that, it's already been negotiated. Kind of an interesting spot, because we just passed, it's it's already been sought out before the the ordinance was passed that required him to go get the council's approval. And so I, and we have 15 days, so I I guess if if the county is ready to go forward on that, we could execute that agreement without coming back before the council, before this ordinance goes into effect.
So do we need to make a motion that we approve of him working with Box Elder County?
So I don't think prior to, prior to passing this, he actually required the council's approval for that. So I'm, so I think he can go forward on that if it gets done within the next 15 days before this goes into effect.
Before it goes into effect, okay.
Great. I just want to thank Gina and Paul, that, and I can attest also is the time that they spent. There was a lot of hours that they came in early in the morning, met with IDC and and things. There is a lot of time spent outside of of these rooms. So thank you for your help and thank everyone for your service. And I'll I'll miss you on the council, but I look forward to working with the new people. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. All right, 11G, Resolution 2022-34, A Resolution on County Policy on Legislative Matters.
Me again. Imagine that. Okay, so this is a policy that we have started in practice, and I thought it would be good to put it in into an actual written policy. What it is, is the county as the legislative body has the authority, and and it is their, their job to take positions on legislative matters. And so to avoid confusion, make sure that everybody's on the same page. What this policy does is it has the county council set the county position on all legislative and policy matters at the local, state, and federal levels. However, individual county elected officials, so that would be like, you know, the attorney, the executive, the sheriff, and even us as council members, or you guys as council members, because I'll be gone, may take positions on legislative matters, but shall clearly communicate that the opinion is theirs or that of their office and not the position of Cache County. So the official position of Cache County on legislative matters will be set by the county council.
This I agree with.
And and I agree with it as well, because if you already, this just reinforces what's in our county code. You look at powers and duties of the county council under 2.12.120. It says, the county council is the legislative body of Cache County and is vested with all legislative and policy determining powers of the county. Does the, do you see any conflict?
No, I I I read through this, Gina sent it to me. The distinction between, I can go to the to the legislature and say, say there's a repeal of the death penalty, I can say the Cache County Attorney's Office opposes the death penalty being repealed. I can't say Cache County opposes that, because that that is a decision for the council to make of what the policy of the county's going to be. Individual, other individual elected officials can make the same statement for their their office. If I want to go down and say Cache County opposes this, I need to come to the council and make that pitch for some type of resolution. I I think that's a, there's not prior restraint on anyone's speech, because that's a power that is explicitly the council's, and it doesn't interfere with any elected official stating their own opinion or their office's position.
You know, this is not just going through like proper channels, but it also, you know what? It's really good that information is not withheld from the legislative body, that that's brought back. We talk about it, let's get a position on it, take that position collectively from the entire council that represents the county down there to then, you know, to to work on behalf with our, our
Legislators.
Legislators and all them down there that says, yes, we're together on this. I think that will, that'll create a, you know, a more cohesive, you know, stand all together on things versus standout individuals, so.
Okay, so is that a motion, Gina?
Yeah, therefore I would move with resolution. I guess we don't waive the rules with resolution?
Yeah, we do it still initially.
We do on this initial, I'll waive the rules on Resolution 22, 2022-34. We pass that, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we waive the rules and pass Resolution 2022-34. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Guess what, Diana, you're finally up. Phew, yeah. Item H.
Love leaving me for the grand finale, I always end up at the end of the agenda, but.
Let's take a recess, could we?
I'd like to start, though, by expressing my gratitude for the council. I have watched for years as they have foregone giving themselves a raise. I know that you serve on the council, and each of you signs up for multiple committees, and there's a great investment of your your time. I appreciate the time you spend with me and, you know, my office in getting our work done. So, and a fond farewell to Gordy, Gina, and Paul. So with that, to the business, we, you have before you three hardships. All of them come with a recommendation for denial. One based on ownership, another based on, the other two are based on lack of information.
Diana, if I remember correctly, your office did ask for additional information, but it was not given to your office, right?
But it was not given, yes. They get, we send out actually a formal letter of intent to dismiss, which then gives them 10 days to supply the information. So.
On the one, you know, they withdrew the tax relief application?
They said they wanted to, but so like, once they submit paperwork to the county, it becomes a county record. So then I offered her.
We still didn't have.
So I offered her copies, she declined, but it still comes before the council because that's what the statute demands.
Very good. Counsel?
Well, I would move that we accept the recommendations on these to deny the three requests that came in for, one, I'm going to withdraw it for some ownership issues and then lack of documentation. For those reasons, I'd recommend that we accept those denials.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we go with the decision of the auditor in denying these three hardship cases due to lack of of ownership and lack of documentation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Diana.
Thank you, that was brief and sweet, just the way I like it.
That was a long time.
All right. Looks like I need a motion to move into the Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we move into the Board of Trustees, Cache County Service Area Number One, to discuss a memorandum of understanding between Logan City and Cache County Service Area Number One. Who is addressing on the, Dane?
Yes, so last week, Paul and Nolan basically asked, how does this go wrong? I I've looked at the memorandum, and actually, the the way this goes wrong is we didn't anticipate Service Area Number One dissolving during the course of the. Service Area Number One dissolving during the course of this, which is not contemplated in the memorandum of understanding. So my advice at this point would be to table it for this meeting, allow me and my office to speak with Logan City and have a provision in there that contemplates that switch happening in June, where the consortium would become the entity that the MOU is with. So there's some moving parts there that need to be worked out, so I would recommend against passage of the MOU at this point, and table that until the new year.
So with that, Dane, thank you for your office and the attorneys there, I know you've got more on your plate than you can handle right now, so you're looking at that, it's appreciated. So with that, I'd move that we table this, and in addition to the homework that the new council members are going to have on the general plan, welcome to Service Area Number One.
One question on that, does that, because we've got meetings and stuff coming up on this, this in no way affects those for the CWC continuing and doing their job?
No, I think, I think in the timeframes we have here, we have time to work this out before it's going to have any impact.
Based on that, have anybody from the Cache County Attorney's Office been talked about those meetings that we've got coming up? Is anybody going to be there from outside?
I'll need to talk to Taylor, I know he's been, he's been involved in that, I think he was here, but, I'll point him out.
Sorry to wake you.
So fast, was it?
We had to wake him up.
Yes, I have spoken with Lindsay Peterson, she's kind of the point person on this, she asked that our office draft some of those initial startup documents, and I made it clear to her that going forward, the Cache County Attorney's Office won't work for free for this inter-local entity, that if they did want to use our services after that point, then we'd have to execute a representation agreement, and I encouraged her to go out and look for other attorneys as well to get the best bid, but in the meantime, our office will be drafting those startup documents, and we should be looped in on those meetings.
So I saw that, and my point is, is some of this work is for the county, so how do we split that, charging of that, I mean?
Right, well, so if it's benefiting the county, and if we can, if we determine that it is part of our work as a, you know, in my department, the civil department, if it's benefiting the county, then I think that would be fine, but whereas on a continuing basis, they have to file certain things, and if they want representation that's just for the CWC, then at that point, we'd have to make some sort of fee arrangement.
I think that's what they were talking about anyway, weren't they? Well, I just want to make sure we're fair, because, yes, we've got the communities, and they've got their attorneys, but we're also, I mean, Dave and I and others who are serving on that CWC, and this helps the county in getting garbage collection and everything else, and so I just, I'm just saying that it would seem to me that some of that legal advice comes to help the county as well.
And if we are, if we are directed by the policymakers here in the county that we offer it up for free, then we're happy to do that.
I'm not saying free, but I'm just saying representative of our share.
And what we had talked about is, because there's other entities that, the health department, for example, that we were involved in some of the representation there, and then some outside of what we typically represent, we bill them at an hourly rate based on a discounted rate of what they go to a law firm, so I understand that the council's position there, I don't think the county should eat the entire cost of the legal representation, but I do think that there is a benefit to the county, so we would, we'd already talked to Lindsay about this, that it would be a discounted rate.
Just so we're being fair, wanted to bring that up.
But said, reach out, maybe there's someone that can do it cheaper, and, but that's a decision I think the council will need to make, is how much of a discount do we give all of the other cities in this?
The less legal talk that's out there, the better I like it, so I'd rather somebody that I know is coming from our attorney's office, is my own personal opinion, and that's because, as a council member, I'm having to sit and go to those meetings, which has been talked about on this garbage collection and everything else, which is taking a lot of time.
Better the devil you know than the devil you don't, right?
I like to know who I'm dancing with.
There's no really devils in here.
And, I mean, personally, that would be my, my opinion as well, is if, I mean, a little selfishly for the county, but the more control we have, the more say we have, it does become a little bit, they'd be hiring us, and they'd be our client, which is a, is a little bit of a different position to be in, because we look out for what's best for Cache County, but we'd also be looking out what's best for the entire consortium, which might not necessarily always be the same thing.
And the consortium, in any case, if we did end up representing them, they would have to sign a form acknowledging that, a conflict form, that acknowledging that our first priority is to Cache County, and that, that's, that's our primary fiduciary duty is towards the county, so.
And I think that's all of ours, but, you know, just so we're fair in that, because we benefit in working with these municipalities and getting this particular service done, and done to the unincorporated areas of the county, and so I saw that coming across that we charge, but I just want to be fair that, having you guys there, I like, but having you guys there, you're also doing some county business, and so I want to make sure that we're fair in how we're charging them.
Yes, and I definitely don't want to make anyone think we're overcharging them, we're trying to make a buck off this.
I'm just bringing that point out as we discuss.
I think just, to be fair to the taxpayers that pay for the county attorney's office, we shouldn't do it for a complete loss for the county, there should be some, I think we talked about this, Logan putting their MOU that should be done for a reasonable profit. We, if we wanted, if the council directs us to volunteer our service, we can do that, even if it's, there is a charge there, but from my perspective, there should, the other parties to the consortium should bear some of the cost of the legal services.
Well, we're going to these meetings, and we've got county officials in those meetings, and so there should be representation from our county attorney's office to help us make sure we're steering this right, is what I'm saying.
Okay, and for that purpose, absolutely, that purpose wouldn't be something we'd charge for advising our members of that committee from the county's perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor, correct? That we are, and it has been seconded, correct? That we're going to table this memorandum of understanding between Logan City and Cache County Service Area Number One until the, after the new year. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
I'll move that we adjourn from the Service Area One Board of Trustees, sort of the official wordism.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn from the Number One Board of Trustees. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're moving on to other business. On Tuesday, January 3rd, at noon, here in these county council chambers, we will have a swearing-in ceremony for the newly elected officers, so make sure you're here.
I'm Ms. Corten Sandy here myself.
Especially if you're getting sworn in, make sure you're here.
Yeah. All right, council member reports. Councilman Erickson, we'll start on your end this time.
I would just like to publicly share appreciation for our outgoing council members. It has been a pleasure, a pleasure to work with them, it's been a pleasure to keep Gordy out of the newspaper.
I don't mind the newspapers, when you take the picture, and then you have to bring donuts, that's what I don't like.
But no, I, you know, it is, it is just, it is a pleasure to, like I say, we're work with such fine, admirable, and honorable people that love the county, they, and they'll, they will, they'll sacrifice them, their needs, whatever it is, to make sure that there's honesty and integrity in everything about the county, and I commend you for being who you are, and I appreciate you, and I declare you as friends forever, so.
Councilman Zillis.
Well, counsel and executive, I want you all to know, against the county attorney and the clerk and all that, and all the county employees, it's been a joy and a benefit and of a friendship and a bond with all of you. I know when I'll see you in the street, from now until eternity, I'll be a friend, and I'll be excited to trade stories, what a great experience. And then going forth, I want all of you to know that I'm somewhat concerned about the council, we had a tough year, and I am encouraging you all to do whatever it takes to make it possible that we can, we can move forward, and that we can fulfill our assignments, and make sure that the council in Cache County no longer makes newspaper every, every meeting, and that we are able to get back to doing the county business without all of the craziness that can go on. Now, the craziness is a situation where two individuals can be right at the same time, it's just a difference of opinion, but I'm excited about the three new council members, I think they're top-notch, and they're replacing us old dogs, and they'll have new ideas, and they'll have new ambitions, and use them, and make sure that they, they will help us all to do better. I guess I put a special challenge out to whoever's going to be the chair next year, to take some time in January to sit down with all of parties concerned, and to make some, make some goals, and make some situations where positive things can go forward, and that's what I hope. I feel a little bit bad about leaving the council in a little bit of a mess, and not being here to help work it through, but I know we've got some, some council members that are still going to be on board, we have new, new council members that's been elected, and they will, they will contribute, and they'll make for a very, very good, a very good experience for everyone, and it's been a pleasure, and I want, I say that from the bottom of my heart, it's been a pleasure to serve with all the county people. The friendships that they developed and the experience, good and bad, are all good, and we learn from them, and we go forth, and thank you, thank you for being who you are, and there's nothing more exciting than to have a conflict among council members, and you address it, and you get all red in the face and all that, and then in the end, you shake, you don't shake hands, you just slap each other on the back and say, I didn't do too well on that one, and the next time it's the other way around, but that's what we want to be, we want to be able to converse freely, we need to be able to share our opinions, and then, even though they may not be exactly our opinion, still respect them. One time I was in a deposition, and an attorney was going after me like you cannot believe, and I finally said, he want to know this, and he want to know that, and I finally said, well, I want you to know that it's my opinion, and you can't debate my opinion, and I think he sat back and looked at me for a while and said, yeah, I guess that's right, you can't debate somebody's opinion, because it's theirs, and it's their personal opinion, you don't have to agree with it, but you have to respect it, but it'll be enjoyable for the council to continue, and I guess it'll be enjoyable for Paul and Gina and I to step away from it and let you go at it, and thank you for your, your time and all that I've been able to contribute in a small way. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
When I first got on, I just said in the name of Jesus Christ, amen, because that was my train.
You're in the paper.
On that note.
I was sitting here timing him, and he actually talked more than Dane did, so.
You're an attorney now. You're an attorney.
All I wanted was an explanation from Dane, and he went into way.
He'll give you an honorable degree in law, so anyhow, my points, I appreciate those who are leaving, Gina, Paul, and Gordon, I think Gordon has some of the most history and knowledge that the county is losing, I hope we can call him on at times and say, help us on this as we debate and make decisions on that, because I think he has strongly and very well represented the county, so, the same with Gina, she has taken immense amount of time and put effort into this, that I just sit back and nod, and I look at Paul and his excitement in defending and watching for what is right, and I appreciate that, so my hat's off to those three guys, my hat's off to all of you who serve, I'll keep my hat on, because I don't do very good, so, but I will say, on the garbage thing, I'm bringing in an update, the CWC is meeting, we have many meetings going on that, there's a lot of people trying to do the best we can for that dumb garbage waste thing that we've got to deal with, but they're all trying their best and trying to get that done, so that it helps the county as we go through this change, so lots of meetings going on there, there's some tomorrow, some next week.
Could I say, could you make sure that someone from my office is getting emailed about those meetings, I'm not getting...
That's why I wanted to bring that up, because...
I'm not getting any notice, but I do want to make sure that...
Hey, I'll talk to you after, so you've got that, because I think it's important that, as we from the county sit on that, that we have our understanding of the county attorney's office, so that we're being steered in the right direction, so.
Thank you, I'll get with you after this.
Okay, if that's okay, so, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Paul?
I feel like the mule that the farmer entered into the Kentucky Derby, and somebody asked the farmer, do you think he compete, can compete, and the farmer said, no, but the association will do him some good. You know, I have racked up quite a record, and one of the ones that I have the best is I've been outvoted six to one more times than anybody else up here. And even with y'all doing that, I have immense amount of respect for each one of you, eternal gratitude for what you do, for the friendship, support, advice you've given to me, and words just will fail, so I'll just say that when I think of you, you know, you're good timber, and that poem that ends with, "Where thickest lies the forest growth, we find the patriarchs of both, and they hold counsel with the stars, broken branches show the scars of many winds and much strife, this is the common law of life." Glad to have gotten some scars with y'all along the way, thank you for having me, and keep it up, this is a special place, and y'all do a good job watching over it, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Paul.
Nothing particular, except echoing the same thoughts concerning Gordon and Paul and Gina, I appreciate you very much, being able to work with you and the contributions you've made to our county, and I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Gina?
Okay, I have a couple of things here, so the first thing I wanted to note, and it's too bad that we don't have the clerk's office here, because I would ask, but we still have, five ordinances from our September 27th meeting that are not online, and they're important ones, it's the Ad Protection Area Advisory Board, the amendments to the private airport, that would be dealt, the amendments to the campground, with the definition and uses changed, the 8.12 definitions in code, which had stuff like what burning, agricultural burning and that stuff meant, and then the transfers, so those still are not showing up online in our ordinances, and so I'm hoping someone could check into that, I know sometimes it takes a while, but it seems like it's been long enough that they should show up. Another thing that I wanted to bring up, as you're going to move into the new year and be looking at this, is... and be looking at this, is a discussion that arose, and I ended up talking to our state auditor about this, but we need to be really careful with the pay that boards get, and we have a particular board, the trust that the council okayed paying board members. And the problem with that is, it's double dipping, because the county people that we are appointing to that board are, are being paid a salary to work for the county, they should not also be taking some sort of stipend or something from that board, and that, that came from our state auditor, John Dugle. So as you move forward with that, that's something that needs to get looked at, and I, I have told the county attorney's office about that, and specifically Jarris as well, he knows about that, so I'm hoping that you guys can create some, some policy about that. Another thing that I talked just today with Dane and also Dave Erickson, because he's kind of in on this, is training for special service districts like cemetery districts and drainage districts. I brought this up before and was told that they have training somewhere else, it's not the function of the county, but unfortunately, it seems to be, what I understand is that training could be falling through the cracks, and those folks are good folks and they need to understand what they're doing. One of the issues that, that brought this up again was that the Hyde Park Cemetery District has not filled out the forms to the auditor showing their expenditures, I think for the last three years, and they're at, the treasurer's actually holding their money under state law. So we've got some issues like that, and while it might not be county's job to do that, I think it would be a great service if we could help those folks make sure that they know what their jobs are so that they can be good stewards of taxpayers' money, so. And that said, I, gosh, I didn't think I'd get emotional. Counsel, I want you to know what a pleasure it has been to serve with each of you. You are amazing people, absolutely incredible, who love this county, who want to do the right thing, and are always looking out for the citizens, and I have appreciated that so much and really have enjoyed working with each of you. You are just a tremendous group of folks, and I feel like Paul too, I feel like I was the, actually, I feel more like the dog in the Kentucky Derby, I'm not even good enough to be on the donkey part, but you guys are great and are very dear to my heart, and I thank you for this experience and for, for all that you've done. Same with department heads, I'm afraid if I name names, I'll forget somebody, but you guys, you know who you are, and you guys work so hard for the county, thank you. You guys are good people, and I just thank you for what you do, and I know that I'm going to miss every single one of you. So, and I got to remember to take a picture of that, that painting, because I stare at it every Tuesday, so the first Tuesday in January, I'll have to just get it out just to kind of wean myself off of it, so. Thank you, and Janine as well. Janine, you are remarkable, what you do, you don't get the credit that you deserve, that you are the glue that holds us all together, so thank you.
Thank you.
And on top of that, just a wonderful human being, so thank you all for your friendship and, and all that you've taught me, and the good people that you are, thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Okay, I'm going to show this. This is a card that was sent to the council, everybody can take a look at it. It was given to the council by, from the Jump the Moon Foundation. They had applied for RAPS funds and were given RAPS funds, and this is just a great big giant thank you card, and it's awesome. On the inside, it has pictures of the people affiliated with Jump the Moon, and if any of you don't know and haven't been down on Center Street, to look at the ornaments, candy ornaments in the windows, in one of the businesses down there, Jump the Moon donated, I think it was like four ornaments, they are awesome. There's one that I really like, it's a Santa Claus, so go take a look at those ornaments, and there's some, there's pamphlets in here on information on Jump the Moon, so I thought that was awesome, and thanks to Janine for sharing that with us, so.
I think Alma brought it.
Alma, did you bring it? Where's Alma? He went home.
Snuck out.
Yeah. All right.
Executive session.
My turn. It's been, it's been a good year, a tough year, but I have enjoyed serving with these three special people that are leaving. Gordy, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done. Gina, thank you for being so on top of things, and I, I'm just amazed at your ability for policies and procedure and all of that, it just amazes me, and thank you for your service. I have a special place in my heart for Paul. He's been a great, great co-chair, and he's been so honest with me, and I know I can be honest with him, and he knows that there were times when things were said or done that I would have done it a different way, but I always respect him for what he believes in and what he stands up for. And I appreciate the whole council for all that you've taught me, and thank you for everything, and good luck to you three, we'll miss you.
Thanks for being the chair this year.
Yes, we are grateful for you.
Thank you. All right. That said, I need a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Need a state way.
Okay, we are going to move into executive session to discuss, first of all, Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five one C, discussion of pending or reasonably imminent litigation, and then we will also discuss Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five one A, discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. Okay, motion, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.